I need to take their seats. Everybody's so happy to see each other. Everyone's chatting it up. I've seen folks I haven't seen in years, community voices, CCRC, Childcare Lines, all my homies. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Judy Abdo.
Here.
Robert Byrd. Yvette Martinez.
Here.
Summer McBride. Brandon Nichols.
Here.
Marcella Ramirez.
Here.
Winnie Wexler.
Here.
Deborah Allen. Jaclyn McCroskey.
Here.
Deanne Tilton.
Here.
And Holly Mitchell.
Here.
Coram is present.
Thank you very much. I know we've got a couple of board members who are in transit. We look forward to them joining us. Good afternoon, Ms. Bo.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
I see through the magic of technology that we've got a couple commissioners who have apparently requested the board's approval to remotely participate in today's regular meeting due to physical or family medical emergency that prevents them from being here. Would you acknowledge who those are for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioners Martinez and Abdo are joining us virtually under AB2449.
Thank you. Have either of those commissioners participated remotely in the commission's regular meetings under AB2449 for either just cause or because of emergency circumstances at least twice this calendar year?
Confirming no for both commissioners.
Excellent. So we're glad that we have that option available to them and us, and welcome to you both. It's good to see you. I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve Commissioner Martinez and Abdo's request to participate remotely in today's regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Chair Mitchell, if I could just clarify that they're participating for just cause purposes.
Okay.
Commissioner Martinez, the just cause rationale is a need to take care of childcare. And then for Commissioner Abdo, I believe it's with respect to a illness that that she is participating remotely.
Okay, and the bill requires that we specify the just cause on record?
Yeah, so we have to specify the rationale for the just cause. We also have to distinguish between whether it's just cause or emergency circumstance.
Okay, so both of these are just cause?
Both of these are just cause, which does mean that the board does not have to approve their participation for just cause.
Beautiful. Man, I wasn't there to vote on AB2 for Lauren. I'd have made a couple of changes. It feels a little intrusive to me, but I am no longer a member of the California Legislature, so I'll just keep my opinion to myself. But thank you very much, Council. I appreciate you. We are going to proceed with public comment on the consent agenda, please.
Confirming that there are no public comments on the consent agenda.
All right, before we call for the roll, any questions with regard to consent agenda? No one wishes to pull anything off? Excellent. If we could call the roll.
Judy Abdo. Yvette Martinez.
Here.
Judy, did you vote yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Brandon Nichols.
Yes.
Marcella Ramirez.
Yes.
Winnie Wexler.
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you very much. We're gonna transition on to Agenda Item Number Four, which are remarks from me, and I'd like to begin by thanking all of the First Five staff and board as we got through another budget cycle and continue to work on our strategic plan reset. As it relates to the reset, there's been a lot of work in an endless number of hours that are being put in as we continue to fine tune the reset, which is really critically important because we acknowledge the world around us has changed since the plan was finalized. I recognize this process can be tedious, as with all planning endeavors, and lengthy, but it's important, I believe, that we get it right because, as we all know, LA County's children and their families are counting on us to do so, and they deserve it. On today's agenda, we'll be presented with updates on the strategic reset and landscape analysis, as well as a presentation on early care and education. I have to share with you the PowerPoint presentation we had at the last meeting. I have distributed to any number of people, a number of places I've gone to, former colleagues in the legislature, others. I just thought it was wonderful, important data, timely data that represents all of LA County. So I, for one, appreciated the analysis and will continue to share that information. So colleagues, you'll be asked about your vision and where you hope to see the organization in the years to come. As we prepare to provide that feedback, I ask the commissioners to continue to bring your individual expertise to the table. But it's also important that we all keep First Five's collective mission top of mind and continue to use the North Star to guide our collective work. When we talk about every child in LA County reaching their full developmental potential throughout the critical years of prenatal to five, we have to ask ourselves, what does that mean to us? And it's my expectation, as your colleague and chair, that as we answer that question, we continue to keep our commitment to racial justice and equity in mind because it's only then that we can truly best serve the beautiful complexity and diversity of the children that comprise LA County. So with that, is there any public comment? Oh, we did that at the beginning.
We did that for the previous item, but confirming there are no public items for your comments.
No public comment for the chair's report. Thank you. Colleagues, let's move on to Item Five, which is our Executive Director's Report. Thank you, Carla.
Thank you so much, Supervisor. Welcome. It is really, really wonderful to see a lot of the First Five LA colleagues in the audience getting stuck in the elevators together because now there's rush hour to get on the elevator. We actually brought back staff this this is the first week that we're implementing our new hybrid policy, and it has been really phenomenal to be in dialogue, in conversation, in community with many of you. This month also marks the start of First Five LA's fiscal year, and we are on the same fiscal year and timeline as the state. And earlier this week, the governor officially signed our new state budget, $310 billion. While that sounds like a lot, the commission has heard that this year was a little bit more complicated with budget negotiations. We had a $30 billion deficit at the state, and we also pushed the timeline to collect revenue or income tax returns in October. So that made negotiations a little complicated, and what it meant is that we especially our partners in the audience and others working towards issues for children zero to five, that that message was continuously elevated. And I've gotta say that historically, in such a time of volatility, and our chair would know this best, children and families are not always prioritized and often are the first to be cut. And this budget is historic in that we were at the table. Children and families continue to be part of the conversations because of the work that's being done by our partners. Still, we know that California has a long way to go to think about children's budget and making sure that we continue to center children and families. But I do wanna highlight some boosts in this budget and really show appreciation for our O-GAP team that worked in partnership with many other folks and really important wins in this budget. One is family fees and making sure that those that cannot afford childcare were yes, and the chair worked, has done a lot of extensive historic work on some of that. And the budget also authorized a $2.8 billion fund to continue to increase access for childcare and preschool. In short, a healthy budget, given the realities of what we faced this year. Still, as First Five really wants to work with you, the commission, in thinking about our strategic plan, and then how do we continue to bolster that? Proposition 10 makes our charter really, really clear. We are here for the population of prenatal to five, and that is the focus of our strategic plan and making sure that we continue to lift up the needs of this population. In the last few months, the commission heard really important information about the change post pandemic. You heard Los Angeles County has over half a million children under the age of five. That's the population we serve. There are over 243,000 households with children under age six with insufficient means to basic needs, and we discussed some of the basic needs, and you saw the access and lack of access to some of that. And what we've discovered in our landscape is, and what many of you knew in your gut and instinctively, is our children are coming into a really, really different world post pandemic. And what we hope to do and be in conversation, partnership with all of you is, what are we going to do differently to make sure that we're addressing those needs? And that's the conversation today. And I'm really excited to welcome Chrissy Castro and Dr. Rigo Rodriguez. If you just wave to us, we will be meeting them officially. Many of you know them already.
Through the strategic reset plan and will lead those conversations. And we're really lucky to have the
Two of you. And lastly, for some First Five LA team updates, we have shared with many of you that today is Sharna's last day, and I'm not sure audience, but we wanna congratulate Sharna. She has the great opportunity of joining First Five Riverside. And in the interim, we are absolutely thrilled to have Ofelia Medina, who's sitting all the way in the back, if you say hello. Will be serving an interim role on helping develop our policy agenda and working good work that we have with you all in the coming months. And of course, I cannot conclude my comments without really saying thank you to the First Five LA team. The last few months, the team has dedicated endless hours to think about our landscape, to think about community engagement, and to continue the really good work that they're doing. This week is the first week we're here together. We've shared donuts, coffee, lots of stories about what the summer looks like. And I'm really excited about that opportunity with our team to continue to build that community connection as we do that parallel with community folks that we will hear from today. So with that, Madam Chair, turning it back to you.
Excellent. Thank you. Having transitioned into a new gig, if you will, in the middle of COVID, having had to hire staff and onboard staff and not be share, not being able to share space for, I think it was like three months for us, I can understand how important it is to have the opportunity to for you to connect with your team and for your team to connect with you in person. So I'm glad that we, as a county and state, are able to make this transition back into the workplace, and congratulations on that. Any questions board members have of our ED? Public comment?
Confirming there are no public comments on the ED comments. And if I may add, Madam Chair, before we move on to the next item, we have a request from our virtual board member attendees for all speakers to ensure that they are speaking into the mic, to ensure that they can hear coherently during the Thank you so much.
Point taken. Thank you. Let's transition now to the meat of today's meeting, our strategic plan reset using parent and early educators' voices and data to inform our systems change approach for early care and education. Happy to hand it over to staff to lead us through this exercise.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners, staff, and members of the public. We're excited to be presenting the next item on the agenda, which is focused on highlighting what we're hearing from parents and early educators to inform our own thinking and approach to systems change within the early care and education system. I'll make a few very brief contextual remarks and then turn it over to the panelists, who will provide us greater detail on the topic and findings from two new reports or landscape analyses that focused on home-based childcare. But first, a bit of context. As you know, since February of this year, our staff have been engaged in the strategic reset process. Back in February, the board asked us to dig into our work and the larger ecosystem in which we do our work to inform our strategic reset. I think it was Commissioner McCroskey who suggested we undertake some case studies of our work and what we're learning, which we did present as part of our landscape analysis. We further heard from the board in March when we undertook the breakout sessions and focused on some questions related to the work, the systems that we're engaging, and the roles that First Five LA has taken, and you provided input on that. More recently, at our last board meeting in June, we brought forward highlights from our landscape analysis, including data and demographics referenced by the chair and our executive director, and measures of child and family well-being. Those data points were also further examined in June's PPC meeting. This landscape also included an analysis of policy opportunities, as well as an analysis of our seven programmatic investment areas that represented the vast majority of our annual expenditures and in some cases, over a decade of First Five LA's contributions to those bodies of work. In some ways, that conversation continues today and into today's panel, during which we will share highlights from our own landscape analysis focused more specifically on the early care and education system here in Los Angeles County, which began just over a year ago, and fortunately, is able to inform our strategic reset. So just to explicitly connect the two, our specific landscape analysis on ECE started over a year ago, and we're bringing it to inform our broader strategic landscape analysis informing strategic reset. We also heard from the board a desire to bring forward the important voices of community and parents, which will be highlighted as part of today's panel presentation. So, and those findings and highlights will both be with the presentations that our own team will be providing, our ECE team, as well as our partners at UC Berkeley Center on childcare employment. So with that, I will turn it over to Gina, who will launch us into our panel presentation. Gina Rodriguez is with our ECE team. Gina.
Thank you, John. Good afternoon, Commissioners and First Five LA colleagues and the public listening in this afternoon. We're so very pleased to be here to continue to learn and understand about home-based childcare. As you can see, we're joined by a notable team of practitioners and researchers and advocates. And as you remember, at the last PPC, data on child and family well-being illuminated the lack of access to early care. So in our presentation today, we'll explore a part of the ECE system that if strengthened and supported, can improve access to quality care, early care and education for families and children. So the agenda for today will include a deeper look into the landscape of home-based childcare in Los Angeles County. We'll hear from our colleagues at the CCRC, researchers Susan Savage and Olivia Piado, who will share findings from the report titled Essential for Families: Findings from a Landscape Analysis of LA's Home-Based Childcare. And we'll also learn in more detail about the Los Angeles context, demographics, and the experience for families who have their children in home-based settings and the early educators who provide care. You'll also hear from Leah Austin and Anna Powell from the Center for the Study of Childcare Employment at UC Berkeley, who will share statewide level data about parents' reliance and preferences in family, friend, neighbor, and nanny care as we hear about this common choice and how parents deeply value home-based care. And in between these presentations, we'll hear and learn directly from early based setting Jenny Lau and Justine Flores, who own and run family childcare businesses. They are members of First Five LA's ECE Advisory Committee, what was formerly known as a Provider Advisory Group. And also, our intention today is hearing from these speakers, our intention today in hearing from these speakers is to better understand the experience of families and educators to use these narratives and data to inform our strategic plan reset. So I just wanna provide a little history around our home-based childcare strategy. In September of 2021, the Board of Commissioners approved a strategic plan to move forward with the landscape analysis to understand the needs of family childcare and family, friend, and neighbor care in Los Angeles County and the families who access them within the subsidy system. The landscape launched in February of 2022, and in 2023, at the PPC, we presented an update on some of the landscape findings and a snapshot of the overall recommendations. We are currently in the dissemination phase, and our contracted partners are the Childcare Lines of Los Angeles and the Childcare Resource Center. Let me also remind you of some additional context about providing care in a home-based setting. A key component of California's childcare landscape is home-based childcare, what we refer to as HBCC, which is childcare offered in a provider's home or a child's home. We have two broad categories: family, friend, and neighbor care, FFN, also known as licensed exempt, and family childcare, FCCs. FFN care can be paid or unpaid. If paid, they can be paid by a parent or through vouchers from the state via agencies like the RNRs and the alternative payment agencies. FCCs who are licensed provide care in their home, and they are paid by parents or through vouchers from the state. In addition to being the most common form of non-parental childcare for toddlers, HBCC is also used the most by historically marginalized families. They are more likely to encounter inequitable access to services and discrimination within systems. Marginalized families include low-income families with parents working non-traditional hours, immigrant families, families living in rural areas, communities, families of color, or families with children who have disabilities. Also, many of these groups are more likely to live in licensed childcare deserts. There's also a greater concentration of dual-language learners in home-based childcare. Home-based early educators are primarily women of color. Black and Latina women are overrepresented in the home-based care workforce. Most children receiving subsidized care are in home-based settings. However, state-funded quality supports have largely been designed for center-based care, like state preschools. HBCC, early educators and the children in their care do not have equitable access to the resources necessary to provide and receive the highest quality of care. The ECE system is already shaped by local, state, and federal policies with deep roots in slavery, colonization, racism, and sexism. The home-based childcare workforce and the children in their care are marginalized within this already oppressive system. So it's important to recognize how critical it is to address issues around home-based childcare in order to strive for greater equity and justice for children, families, and early educators. So as you listen to the presentations today, please consider these questions. What are the opportunities for First Five LA and partners to better support children in home-based? What do early educators need? How can they be supported? How can this presentation inform our thinking around the strategic plan reset? So with these questions in mind, I will hand it off to Susan Savage and Olivia Piado, the researchers from the CCRC, to discuss the findings from the LA County HBCC landscape analysis.
Thank you, Gina, for that thorough and thoughtful review of this important work. And this work could not have been accomplished without the Childcare Alliance of Los Angeles and the associated RNR and alternative payment organizations throughout LA County. Just a bit of an overview of this project. Data collection occurred with the community. So we ensured that the language groups were represented in tool design, methodology, and review of the analysis to ensure that the recommendations coming forward really truly represent the lived experience of the community as opposed to, as Gina was talking about earlier before, reverting back into the classist, racist, sexist systems built on colonization and slavery. So hearing from the community and having them drive this research was really key to ensuring that what we come out of will benefit the community. We were able to survey over 400 family, friend, and neighbor providers, over 700 licensed childcare providers, and over 700 parents who use home-based care across L.A. County. And again, because of the reach of the Childcare Alliance of Los Angeles, we were able to represent all eight spas and we were able to ensure that the language and ethnicity representation across the eight spas really drove this research. We also conducted 30 interviews with family, friend, and neighbor providers to dig into the stories and elaborate on the quantitative data from the surveys. 12 focus groups with FCCs and parents and 12 community convenings, again, to bring the results back to the community and have them help us understand the results and drive the recommendations. What you can see in this chart, and the first column is data from the Berkeley Center so that we can have a bit of a comparison from their L.A. County data to see if maybe we were reflecting some of their results. And it is fairly similar. We pulled in in our surveys, fewer white Caucasian providers, little more of the Hispanic Latino provider. You might notice also, there isn't really a comparison for the FFN provider or the parents, but we intentionally did additional outreach to the African-American community and we were able to increase the percentage of the FFN side and the parent side to represent that community. The important aspect of this slide is to show that these two communities, the FCC and the FFN, are distinct. Many programs come to the FFN and FCC entity treating them the same. And we can see from some of this background data, they are distinct populations. And so when we design programs, we cannot create a one-size-fits-all system. You can see that nobody in this chart is well-resourced, so I'm going to put that out there first. But the FFN group is even more disenfranchised and less resourced than even some of our subsidized childcare parents that use that type of care. You can see that they're less likely than the FCCs to be living with a partner. And we all know that if you have a partner, your income in your household is going to increase. Lower levels of education, lower levels of income, lower levels of homeownership. And so again, we need to really think about these two populations in very distinct, different ways when we turn to serve them. And now I'll turn it over to Olivia to really dig into some of the data.
Thank you, Susan. Yes, so in order to so one of the themes that you'll see come up again and again is how different the population of FFN and FCCs are. So one item that we wanted to look at because it's important to understand in order to be able to provide support is their motivation for providing care. And what you see here are what the providers told us their motivation for doing the work that they do. So if you look at that first bar at the top, 75% of the FFNs say they were in this work to help the parents of the children they cared for, their own family, their friends, as opposed to the FCC group. In that second column, the second bar that you see, the 49%, the dark bar, that's the FCC group. So for them, the greatest motivation for doing this work was because it's a personal calling or career. So as you can imagine, this may be beneficial to know in terms of the supports that we're providing, the model of care where for FFN, family support model of care may be more appropriate than a business model of care, which may be more appropriate for the FCC. When we, just to give you a little bit of context on who the FFNs were, in this group, 92% of the FFNs are related to the child that they care for. We also wanted to get an idea on who are the children that they're serving. And so this really shows or illustrates one of the strengths of both FFN and FCC providers in that if you look at all of the different age groups, so this is the age groups that the providers serve, you can see that both FCC and FFNs serve children of different age groups, from infants and toddlers to preschoolers, school age. But what I would like to draw your attention to is the last two bars at the bottom that illustrate how or what percent of the providers serve more than one age group. And this really illustrates the strength of the FCC group, where 89% indicated that they serve more than one age group, so they're serving multiple age groups. We suspect that the 47% or the less percent of FFNs serving multiple age groups has to do with the fact that the FFNs are typically only serving children from one family. And so the range of children that they're serving is less. And we saw this when we looked at the ethnic groups of the children that the providers serve, where 77% of FCC said they served children of multiple ethnic groups, 46% of FFNs indicated the same. In trying to learn a little bit more about their participation and support, we asked about professional development participation in the prior 12 months. And what's important to illustrate here, and here we broke this down by not only FCC and FFN, but by FCCs who have a small license, FCCs who have a large license, and then the FFN group. So that first column is the FCC group and then followed by the small license and large license groups and then the FFN group. So overall, FCCs participated, indicated greater participation in professional development than the FFN group. But what's interesting is that when we also looked at license type, those with a small license had less participation than those with a large license. And what's particularly striking here is if you look at the bottom row, the percent that indicated they had not participated in professional development activities in the prior 12 months was really high for FFNs with 70% indicating this as opposed to 23% of the whole FCC group. Again, possibly sending us in the direction of perhaps the current support models that are out there for this are not the most appropriate for the FFN group. We also wanted to understand who providers go to for information, who are their trusted sources of information? So when they are looking for information related to childcare work, no surprise because they are so connected to the family. For the FFN groups, they were likely to reach out to a family member, whereas the FCC group were more likely to reach out to another childcare provider. We also asked, we wanted to hear from the providers, from their voice, what was or what is their greatest challenge as an early educator? And the top three, the top one is not a surprise. So the top three challenges were not getting paid enough, worries about being exposed to or infected by the COVID-19 virus, and lack of health, dental and/or other benefits. I would like to remind you that the median household income for this group of providers for FCCs was 50 to 65K thousand and for FFNs, it was 15 to 25,000. So not surprising that this was the top challenge. This is one that is rooted in the history of systemic racism and equities in a workforce comprised predominantly of women of color. And it is severely underpaid, the profession is severely underpaid and undervalued despite the critical role that they play in children's and families' lives. To learn a little bit about the future, we asked about how long they estimate to stay in the field, in their current position, taking care of children. So for 29% of the FCCs don't see themselves doing this past five years. And 49% of the FFNs indicated this. For the FFNs, a theme that we heard over and over and over again is that they do this for the families. And many of them were not able to give us a specified amount of time. They were really, their motivation was really driven by, as long as the family needs me, I will do this or I will do this because, you know, the next child is going to school and that's when I'll stop doing this. So it was really rooted in what the family needed. Out of those that are not, that don't see themselves doing this past five years, for the FCC, 60% of those said that they plan on retiring and a quarter of the FFNs, so here's a silver lining in this, indicated that they would like to be licensed. However, another 24% said, I can't do this anymore because of the lack of compensation and that is something that I am not satisfied with. So I'm going to pass it back to Susan.
Thank you, Olivia. So the recommendations that came from the data and the voice of the providers and the parents are sixfold. The first one is to involve the providers in the planning and development of implementation of new policies and programs. And again, this will help us get out of the systemic barriers that we have already created is to follow the lead of the parents and the providers. And First Five L.A. has already started to move in that direction with the Provider Advisory Committee. We also need to ensure that we look at distinct systems of support for FFN and FCC providers and understand the needs and assets that each group brings differently to the table and offer a menu of options to support them in their assets and their needs as opposed to, again, a one-size-fits-all. We also need to really develop and implement new ways of outreach and connecting with providers. You heard about the fact that FFN providers are deeply connected with their families. If we're coming to them from organizations they're not familiar with, they're not going to jump on board. FCCs are well-connected, both with their community of providers as well as RNR organizations and other So we can connect with these two provider groups very differently and we need to really think about how to go about that practice and not do the same old, same old. Outreach is also really expensive. This project was well-funded and the outreach was manifold, many hands on deck. That needs to be funded in order to ensure that we're reaching all people and not just those who have a computer, are in the right area of the community, et cetera. Speak English as a first language, that takes money. We need to ensure seamless, responsive, and holistic models for the providers. You've seen the many needs and assets of these providers. How do we put together, cobble together, multiple systems to be able to ensure that we're supporting each level of their assets and their needs? You heard Olivia talk about the fact that we might need to be considering a family support model for FFNs because in our study and other studies, 92, some research shows 75% of the providers who are in the FFN group are related to the child. So when we support the FFN, we're supporting that family system, which is a very different model from what we typically think of with the FCC providers who are businesses. These are typically women who own their own business in their home. And their motivation, as you saw from the research, was a personal calling, career, I want to work from home. Very different from the FFN calling of, I'm here for the family and the children. Supporting a mixed delivery model and a livable wage. The state is moving towards supporting TK and that is incredible. We need that in our communities. We also need to figure out how we're going to support those that are outside of the school district and the school systems and ensure that we're supporting both, both and. Ensuring a livable wage. As Carla mentioned, we are moving in the right direction with rates in the state. I hate to say it, but in 2005, I paid a 14-year-old babysitter better than our state pays today. My cup of coffee costs more than what we pay hourly to a provider. Not okay. We need to develop strategic partnerships that involve many entities at the table. We need government, local, and state. We need CBOs on the ground connecting. We need philanthropy to come to the table. We need the providers and the parents. It's going to be an all-hands-on-deck. And I'm going to turn it back to Gina to introduce the voice of who we really should be listening to, and that's the providers.
Thank you so much, Susan and Olivia, for this deeper look at provider and parent data on home-based childcare within L.A. County. Now we're going to hear from our practitioners and their lived experience of home-based early education and their experience as they open their homes up to children and families. And I'd like to invite to the podium Jenny Lau and Justine Flores, please.
Dear Commission members, thank you for having me here today. My name's Jenny Lau and I graduated from Zhejiang Normal University in China with a bachelor's degree in preschool education. And personally, I manage a large home-based daycare in Diamond Bar, L.A. County, supported by a team of three staff members and catering exclusively to 12 young children from Chinese families. Through my work, I have become aware that many families are in search of quality childcare, but the number of available options falls for short of the parents' needs. At the same time, I have encountered difficulties in operating my home-based daycare. Firstly, the daycare operates for extensive hours from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Besides, I have to spend an additional two to four hours daily on various tedious tasks such as purchasing food supplies, preparing meals, cleaning, disinfecting, materials preparing for teaching, and parents' communication.
这不仅耗时，而且需要像我这样的经营者投入大量的注意力和精力。
These responsibilities demand a considerable amount of time, attention and energy from caregivers like myself. And secondly, there is insufficient funding for improving the daycare environment and upgrading the quality of services. Periodic remodeling of the home environment is necessary to comply with the home-based daycare standards and provide a secure and safe space for children's indoor and outdoor activities. And thirdly, as a non-native English speaker, I face challenges in understanding the administrative policies. Often essential resources lack Chinese translations. And there is a scarcity of Chinese-speaking specialists available for consultation. And this makes the job even more challenging for me as a provider whose native language is Chinese. And moreover, continuing education cost-wares and training programs tailored for Chinese daycare service providers are significantly limited, hindering my ability to achieve further professional growth in this field. Lastly, family childcare providers face difficulties in accessing benefits such as health insurance, pensions, dental and vision coverage. Providers do not have the opportunity for pay vacation, sick leave or personal leave. And these challenges resonate with myself and eighty-two other childcare providers within the Chinese community. However, I'm very proud and happy to be a member of the ECE Advisory Committee. Throughout this year, I have received a lot of help, support and fresh insights on behalf of childcare providers in the Chinese community. And I truly enjoy working with peers from different culture backgrounds in the early childhood education industry through this advisory group. All of this has made me feel more confident and determined in my career development.
是我衷心的感谢First Five LA给我这个机会，代表我们华裔的儿童保育机构发言。
I sincerely thank First Five LA for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of Chinese childcare providers. We're seeking better understanding of the essential work we do as well as increased fundings to support training and language localization efforts. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, commissioners and fellow colleagues. My name is Justine Flores. I'm a licensed, I was a licensed exempt provider in LA County. I decided it would be important and valuable for me to become a high-quality location and proceeded to opening up a home-based small family childcare. As of today, I have expanded to a large family childcare where I serve up to fourteen children from a variety of cultures, religions and exceptional needs. I have been actively involved in First Five ECE Advisory Committee, Childcare Providers United, Community Voices, Parent Voices and many more organizations throughout my community. The family childcare sector throughout California and in Los Angeles in particular needs help with ending the systemic injustice that has plagued our industry for far too long. Licensed family childcare is a career to many of us, not a job. We deserve to receive support with our college-accredited education. Right to select pay time off at our own discretion without an agency or state-funded program selecting for us. In addition, we deserve health, dental and other benefits when caring for children of state-funded subsidies. I am a proud member of the ECE Advisory Committee and I urge you to come to speak and listen to the voices directly so you can hear about the milestones that we have accomplished and the trials and tribulations our children face and future generations will face if a long-term investment is not created. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you Jenny and Justine for sharing your experience with us this afternoon. You've reminded us not only about your passion and commitment to children, but also about some of the day-in and day-out realities you encounter in your family childcare home. So with that, we will then hand it over to Leah and Anna from the Center for the Study of Childcare Employment at UC Berkeley.
Hi, thank you.
Uh, one moment, please, and I just want to remind the commissioners that we want to understand how these narratives and data on home-based childcare and the reliance and preferences of parents for home-based care can continue to inform our strategic plans. So as you're listening, put in on that, please. Okay.
Okay, um, thank you so much. Um, and thank you Carla and John and Gina and the team for inviting us to present today. I do regret that we can't be there in person as planned and appreciate the accommodation for us to join virtually. Before we get into the presentation of our data, I did just want to take a moment and just, I think, appreciate the attention that the commission and staff and your local partners here are giving to home-based providers, inclusive of family, friend and neighbor providers. Um, there are costs and we're hearing many of these and you've, uh, sounds like heard them last month and I'm sure many other times. That there are costs to the severe under-resourcing of early care and education. Um, you know, and this is not, this is all across California, of course. Um, but many of those costs are born uniquely by the early care and education workforce. Um, as you've heard and we see it all the time in our research and in people's lived experience, economic insecurity is rampant amongst the workforce and the consequences we see are especially harsh for Black and Latin women and immigrant women who are more likely to be home-based providers um, in California and who we know from our research are also more likely to be paid less and experience more economic insecurity than their peers. You know, I've been in the sector myself now for twenty years, actually started at First Five Alameda County, uh, was my first job in ECE. But what I see today, I feel like what we're witnessing is simultaneously the most challenging conditions for early educators and caregivers as they work amongst shortages and continue to recover from the many impacts of the pandemic, economical, mental, physical and otherwise. But also some of the most encouraging signs of change. Um, as a member myself of the state's rate and quality reform work group last year, I can say I, I think it's no small feat that we were able to create a guiding policy document for the state that opens with an acknowledgement of historical racism and harm that undergirds current policies and funding strategies, but also offers us a roadmap for change. Um, and I think a really key reason is that this was an open and public process, that providers were part of the stakeholder group and also very active in contributing um, to meetings and voices were heard and really taken seriously. Um, and we also see that the state, I think, is catching up on its attention to the ECE workforce. Um, at least, uh, or especially when it comes to home-based providers. Um, and it's, you know, the work that they're doing overall on rate reform and acknowledging the need to fund at the actual cost of um, care and education. Um, I think the work that's been undertaken locally and the opportunities ahead to uplift home-based childcare um, and education in LA County, um, you know, is really critical components of the ECE system are just well-aligned with progress that's taking place in the state. Um, and in reality, I would say from my perspective um, and observations, it's the models and opportunities to innovate at the local level that actually can serve as proof points and leadership to the state, state as well. So just personally, I'm also very eager and curious to see how um, your work in this area unfolds going forward. Um, as for today, I'm really glad we have the opportunity to present data from our family, friend and neighbor study in which we've surveyed parents and FFN providers. We're going to present parent data today. The study is still underway, so we're presenting a phase of the data. Um, we've gained some really valuable insights about how parents not only utilize different types of, of early care and education, but what they say they need and what they say they want. So Anna Powell, who has been leading this project, is going to take you through um, some of our key findings. So, you know, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Leah. And if someone could help me advance this slide, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much. So as Leah began to describe, uh, what I'm sharing with you today are survey results from parents. Though we were able to reach about thirteen hundred parents around the state, including two hundred and seventy who live in LA County. Um, of course, this is not a random sample. Uh, we largely reached parents through R and R network, Parent Voices, PK and other parent-facing organizations. But using our statistical magic, we have attempted to weight the sample to really align with the true population of California parents. But just always good to remember that, um, you know, no survey is perfect and ours is today. We partnered with Rapid Project at Stanford to implement this study. And we offered the survey to parents in both English and Spanish. And uh, any parent with a child under age six could participate in the study um, living in California. Next slide, please. All right, so first chart I'm sharing with you today is where parents told us they are currently uh, enrolling their child in care. The chart, I'm going to orient you to it briefly. The top half is what parents of children under age three described as their care choices, uh, followed by parents with children aged three to five below that. So infants and toddlers in the top half, preschool-aged children on the bottom half. And these are what parents were currently using. I've highlighted um, in the red boxes, the FFN piece and the LA statistic piece for you. So you can get a better sense of how those are showing up in the data. So statewide, we are seeing that about twenty-six percent of parents said they were using FFN care, either alone or in combination for their infant toddler. And a similar share, twenty-nine percent of parents with preschool-aged children were also using FFN care. And I say alone or in combination because you'll notice that the numbers in the segments don't necessarily add up to one hundred percent. That's because, of course, we know that many parents have combinations, um, so they may have FFN as well as FCC or another arrangement. Now, in LA County, uh, which of course is one of our five regions within the state that we examine, I want to draw your attention to the top half, the parents with children under three and this increased uh, usage of FFN care for that age group. We know that FFNs and infants and toddlers um, are often paired up and we see that in particular in LA County. I did also want to mention a bit about what's not shown on this chart. We did in our report, look at what we observed, different parents of different backgrounds. So for example, we found that Black parents were particularly likely to be using FFN care, especially once again for this infant toddler category. So this is certainly a, um, a care choice that we are observing in this population. And similar to the landscape analysis that you have heard about just before, um, we asked about, oh, is this FFN to you? Are you related? And we similarly found that the vast majority of parents are turning to a relation, um, most often a grandparent. Um, but we did find that in fact, in LA County, there is a healthy smattering of aunties and uncles who are also in the mix. Though grandparents continue to be the most common share. About half of the FFNs that parents are relying upon were receiving some form of compensation, um, whether subsidized or otherwise. Next slide, please. Next, we asked parents about the factors in their decision. And here I'm showing for those preschool-aged families, which factors they consider to be very important, which was the top end of our scale. And I've broken it out in the columns by the type of care that parents were using. So the dark blue, this is the FFN or nanny, really licensed exempt care group of families. And as you see, there's some consensus, health and safety practices are considered very important, pretty much classed forward, even among parents that are using parental care only. But most important, I want to draw your attention to the red box, personal connection, language spoken and cultural background. These are areas in which we see a greater percentage of parents that are in the blue, the family, friend and neighbor or nanny care. These are parents who are more often saying, this is a very important to my decision and what I value about this care relative to licensed care. And so this really points to the strengths and some of the most important assets that FFNs bring to the table. They have the, a clear path to providing this important value to parents. Next slide, please. After we discussed uh, in our survey, learning from parents what they're currently using and what they were factoring in, we then asked parents to really go on along with us on an imaginary exercise of thinking through their ideal. We said, you know, set aside the constraints you feel you have. Set aside your concerns about COVID, um, and the limitations in your choice right now and think about your ideal. And we're presenting here in the dark blue, what the ideal would be for children under three and three to five. And just looking across the chart, you'll notice there's not one option that parents all agree is ideal. But most of the options on this chart are a form of home-based care, right? Really apart from center-based care, uh, parental care only, and then my arrangement is already in my ideal, that's a mix. But these really tell us that uh, there's no one right form of care for every family. Um, and our system needs to be supportive and flexible to allow families to pursue the best arrangement for them. And FFN care um, really holds its own among these other options, especially in the infant and toddler category. It is in fact about on par with the preference for center-based care we see for this age group. Now, this red box at the top, my current arrangement is already my ideal. I wanted to go a bit deeper with this one. So next slide, please. We're looking here at the share of parents who said, yes, my current arrangement is already my ideal. We wondered, which parents are telling us this? Is it overwhelmingly one, you know, care arrangement that is considered ideal? And in fact, no, we find that for, especially for the infants and toddlers, parents who are using FFN were similarly likely as other categories to agree they already had our ideal. Um, amongst the aged three to five-year-olds, there was a bit of a consensus or more likely to see that parents using licensed care felt that that was their ideal for their child. So we know that these group settings um, have very salient value for that age group. But very striking that for the under-three category, there's really just not a lot of difference between the options one-on-one. Next slide, please. I'm going to kind of bring us in through some, you know, voices and snippets brought directly from the parents. So our surveys included open-ended responses. Additionally, we discussed the findings with our parent advisory group to really reinforce that we are lifting up the appropriate theme. So here's some comments that came from parents in our survey who used FFN care. The first theme is about the best environment for the child. So a parent from Fresno County told us that it seemed like the best option for my son. He may need more time for personal growth prior to entering kindergarten. Not all children are ready for kindergarten at age five. What's striking to me about this quote is that it's a parent talking about kindergarten readiness in context of FFN being ideal for that purpose. I think oftentimes we hear this, um, you know, refrain that a school-like setting might be the best way to prepare for going into kindergarten. And we see that that's not always true from the eyes of the families. FFN too, can look like the ideal place for getting that readiness. Then the next quote says, only family can handle the care of my autistic son. The local daycare mistreated him when he previously attended. So here we find another theme that does often come up in research. The trust and support uh, that a family member caregiver can provide is really unparalleled when it comes to supporting children with disabilities. And this is another strength that we know that FFNs can offer. Next slide, please. Returning to this theme of culture and language, here's some parents that are talking about licensed exempt care in this exact frame. We first hear that a family from San Diego County has a bilingual nanny. Um, and we come from a bilingual household. Exposure to cultures is important to our family since we come from a multiple culture. Exposure to cultures is important to our family since we come from a multiple cultural background. And so this is a choice where the licensed-exempt provider is amplifying and honoring that background. And it's absolutely central, in the case of this family, to the choice of care. And then the final quote on here, a parent from Solano County who says, my child, my mother raised five children, including me. Her home is on the way to both mine, my husband's job, and I feel absolutely safe with my daughter and her care. She is also the only child in her care and we share the same culture. My daughter is biracial, my husband is white and I am black. And it was really important for me to make sure that she is cared for by someone who has a cultural connection to her. So once again, a parent who's telling us that this is perhaps one of the most valuable assets that her character can provide. And the next slide, we're coming to an end here. Uh, on here, you'll find a Q R code that will take you to the full report, including some L A County-specific tables, if you'd like to dive in deeper. And thank you very much for having us, commission members, and we look forward to being in touch in the future with any questions you may have. Back to Gina.
Thank you, Leah and Anna, um, and your insight, your rich insight uh about parent preferences for H B C C. So we've heard a lot of information this afternoon and I just want to highlight some of uh what we heard across the presentations and the themes that emerged. Families have a reliance on and preference for home-based care for their infants and toddlers. We heard this from the researchers at U C Berkeley and the C C R C. Families select home-based care for the personal connections, the relationship between the family and provider and the relationship between the child and provider. And the language is spoken, the cultural connections among families and early educators. Parents felt that their children with disabilities receive better care and attention in home-based settings. Early educators are not being paid for the true cost of care. We heard this from all presenters today. Families want access to quality childcare and early educators want quality childcare and both are experiencing barriers within systems. Children and early educators have inequitable experiences due to structural racism. So this brings us to our discussion today. Uh, and we'd like to return to our guiding questions, just as a reminder. What are the opportunities for first five L A and partners uh to better support uh children in home-based settings? What do early educators need? How can they be supported? How can this presentation inform our strategic plan reset? And with that, I'll hand it over to uh Chair Mitchell for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And and just to clarify how we envision this time, um, just going to go around and have commissioners raise questions and answer the question, tell me how you envision this. Okay, so questions on both presentations, the Berkeley survey as well as ours.
Commissioner.
Wonderful, wonderful report. Thank you all. Um, and and I just feel so wonderful that we're that we're really focusing on home-based care now for our youngest children. And you came at it from a number of different perspectives, all of which were really enlightening and interesting. So my pressing question is, are there really good models for the kind of support for F F Ns? You kind of mentioned family support, Susan. Are there good models that we could build on? And this has been a challenge, I think, for a long time um in L A. And I just wonder, there, I'm sure there are wonderful individual models here, but are there across the country or elsewhere, models for kind of more like public support for home-based childcare providers?
Yes, thank you for that question. There are successful models and um it's a diverse range of models. So there are some where it's a home visitation model because, again, they're home-based providers. And one quote that I heard from um a an F F N provider really drove it home. She said, I'm grandma, what do you mean you're going to train me to be grandma? And and so, you know, that's bringing the the very um middle-class lens to a provider as opposed to seeing her as her asset, which is grandma. And so bringing resources to a provider in his or her home is a very successful model in different states and localities. The uh direct cash transfer has been tested and proven that providers will be able to raise their level of economic stability with a direct cash transfer. Homegrown has shown some successful results at. Um, being able to have a one-on-one connection. First Five L A funded a trip of ours to New York to really learn about programs there. And some of those successful models were one-on-one case management navigation, whatever you want to call it, where you don't come in and say, I'm going to teach you how to do it. But just let's have a conversation. And from those conversations, the provider will say, I don't want to learn what you're trying to teach me, I can't pay my rent. And so having that individualized coaching model transferred into more of a a really one-on-one case management, family support model is really key. Also play and learn groups. There are, we learned from a number of the F F N providers that they actually go to the schools where they drop the child off and engage in a parent and me class, class. But it really is a play and learn class. Um, and so these play and learn models, um, some are funded by Packard here in California, are a lot more aligned with what they want to do and what they want to learn and how they want to learn. And in the language that they speak, some don't have transportation. So, yeah, some are interested in something online, but not everybody. And so, yes, there's different models from across the nation that have been proven to be successful in engaging and improving the quality of care.
If I could follow up um on on that last question, because, you know, I'll be the first to admit, I've not been in the day-to-day operational game of E C E for thirteen, fourteen years now. However, as I sat and listened to you and looked at the data, um, you know, I'm remembering things that we did at the agency. I had the pleasure of 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 working for for a number of years. We had lending libraries um where um licensed exempt providers um who didn't have the resources to have a sand and water table or a tricycle for a child who was differently abled, who could come. We did the play and learn groups. Um, uh, you know, uh, Karen Hill Scott brilliantly said one day, you know, there is no grandmother that doesn't want to be the best she can be for her child and wants to have the opportunity to to have health and safety training and E C E training to improve the experience of her child. And we had to think creatively and differently how to provide that to that grandmother. And so as I'm sitting here thinking, well, we were doing those things. I'm also thinking that, you know, many of them were pilots and and could not be maintained when, you know, our cyclical funding experience from the state and feds, um, you know, would happen. You know, we were probably covered it from our admin costs or whatever the case. So making sure that there is, it is valued and a and consistently funded. So R and Rs and 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 payment assistance agencies can can provide it. But I but I think that there were examples and models right here in L A County um that may not continue to be being provided because, you know, we we hit tough economic times as as agencies. I was struck by the couple of things. The the lack of participation in professional development. Um, and in uh who they reached out to for information. Because what I didn't see up there reflected at all was first five or R and Rs or A P agencies. Um, and so then I thought, well, maybe the F F Ns who participated weren't providing care to children who receive a subsidy, therefore they don't have a relationship with a A P agency. Um, but I was just struck that that th- these institutions weren't reflected as someone they reach out to for information.
I can answer that one. So I think there may be a little bit of reflection in their responses. Um, for the F C C group, thirty-four percent of them said that they reached out to coaches, specialists or other agency staff. So it's possible that they're can that they, that's who they thought of, that they're grouped within that category. However, for the F F N group, that's eight percent. So there's still um a lot more outreach with the F F N group. And what we found interesting with the F F N group, and we saw this even in our outreach for for this and other programs, is they need that more personal touch. So the email's not going to work with them. A phone call to say, did you get our email inviting you to participate? Is a lot more effective than just that that electronic um
Right.
communication out there.
No, I get that. What was your F F N group, um, did they all, were they all subsidy providers or no?
The majority of them were.
Okay.
They they were recruited through subsidy programs through the multiple R and Rs and A P agencies across the county. But we did have a subset that um they may have heard about this through social media and did, we're not receiving subsidy that did participate in this.
Last question for me, then I'll open it up to others. The the last line on your kind of summary slide, the home-based childcare context, it said, H B C C, early educators and the children in their care don't have equitable access to the resources necessary to provide the highest quality of care. Tell me what that means.
I think the system has been created to serve more uh center-based care.
Okay.
So.
They certainly have historically had higher reimbursement rates.
Right, and I think that uh home-based childcare providers have kind of been like on the periphery.
Mm-hmm.
Especially F F Ns.
Mm-hmm.
So I wonder if there's another way to work with F F Ns and and family childcare providers that is more like Susan said, the New York model, more one-on-one.
Mm-hmm.
And it's maybe more grassroots-oriented and a family uh supports model.
Mm-hmm.
Where um they are, and maybe we're talking about staff networks where there's actually staff working more intently with networks of F F N and F C Cs to really facilitate getting resources
Mm-hmm.
and helping them through the system.
Mm-hmm.
So that the system is not so cumbersome.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and ideally, we would love for them to be able to access resources at at one entry point as opposed to having to get lost in all the the bureaucracy and all the paperwork.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what is meant by that comment. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you for this pres- presentation. It was so enlightening in so many ways. I have a couple of questions. I note that the survey was done in Spanish and English. And I think a lot of the focus has been on making sure we have bilingual connections. And listening to the presentation by our Chinese caregiver, I'm thinking, how many languages do we have now? Isn't it over a hundred? Um, and what a challenge that is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I I remember a tragic case that we had a few years ago, the Chinese healthcare taker who um with a child who became very ill. And she called for help, but she couldn't find an emergency care provider who spoke her language. And the child uh wasn't provided emergent care and died. And that's something you just don't forget. And one of the things that we realized is there was a high demand for Chinese-speaking caretaker um and very little support for that Chinese caretaker within that culture. So uh I just sometimes remember that there are people who don't speak English. And we often think it's Spanish that we need to, as the language we need to uh communicate with. But for the Armenian population, all the different Asian uh languages, just something to think about. My other question is kind of a deep and broad, profound one. These are kids in the brain development age. And I'm wondering if we have been able to look at what brain stimulating environment they are in. I don't get a feeling for, I I see that we want them to be safe and and healthy and nourished. Uh, have we looked at all at what is the program that we recommend in order to uh promote the brain development of these kids in a healthy way?
Those are great questions. Um, I'll address the language question with the survey first. Um, the survey and interviews and focus groups funded by First Five L A were done in four languages, English, Spanish, Armenian and Chinese. And we actually um engaged providers and staff with the Armenian and Chinese languages to help us implement those so that we could get the voice of those communities. And you're right, we still um did not scratch all of the the threshold languages across. Um, and resources do need to be in all of those languages. And and that's going to be something that we need to consider in this strategic plan going forward, how to reach all of the providers and languages in L A County. Um, in terms of brain-stimulating environments, there is some work going on actually with the F F N group out of the, I think it's the Indigo Cultural Center, building an F F N cul- curriculum specifically geared toward, you know, building brains and language development at et cetera. And by curriculum, I, it's very loose um way of describing curriculum. And you're right, we need to be thinking about how we're building the brains of these children, zero to three. You know, first five California has your your talk, read, sing. Um, and back in the, not that we want to go back here, but back in the fifties and sixties, et cetera, where kids were at home, they were building their brains in a home-based environment. Granted, it was mom. I'm not sure why we discount grandma other than racism. Um, because when I had my children with grandma, I was applauded. You have your child with grandma? That's so wonderful. And yet, some of our parents who choose intentionally, family, friend and neighbor, they're met with suspicion. Why are you choosing family, friend and neighbor when there's licensed care? Do you know they're not as good of quality? Whose version of quality are we talking about? Obviously, you saw from Berkeley in our presentation, the parents' version of quality is that F F N care, is that home-based environment. Many of these children may have experienced trauma from racism. Who's going to be best to nurture that and deal with that trauma? But grandma, who may have also experienced racism, classism, sexism, and which builds the brain.
Yeah, yeah. A great question.
Let me go to Commissioner Abdai. I'll come back.
Thank you. Um, I I feel like a broken record here saying this, but I'm going to say it again. And that is that the complicated way that the state uh requires families to um access both health and childcare kinds of things, I'm sure other things as well. It needs to change. And we've talked about this for years and years and years. But imagine being a family speaking uh some language that's not covered. Um, trying to access programs that they are actually eligible for, but they're not able to access them. And I don't think we're going to see change there until we see a great deal of change in thinking in Sacramento about what oversight of um of programs that have to do with young children really are about. And I, you know, I agree with everything about the brains, the brain development and all of that, that other people are saying. But I just want to say that having having run uh some state programs in my life, I, they were absolutely crazy, complicated to try to access. And for a family that's not a professional early childhood person, it's much more complicated. And I don't know how First Five can make. And I don't know how First Five can make enough of a of a change happen in Sacramento, but I think we have to try.
And and I agree with you, and I and I think it's almost a bigger question about, and it's federal and state. And it's this expectation that if public funds are used and there's this higher responsibility to make sure that they're used right or well, and however you define that. And so it spans all of our support programs, all our entitlement programs. We make people jump through hoops to prove that they are eligible and have maintained their eligibility. And so it's, I I agree with you, but it applies to Medi-Cal and CalWorks and CalFresh and any, any, any program where public resources are spent. There's this expectation that the recipients can be trusted, frankly. And they have to prove ongoing value and worth. So I agree with you. Commissioner Wessler.
Thanks. I'll echo everyone else and complimenting everyone on their presentations. For me, it's, I I I got a lot out of it. I'm trying to reconcile, though, everything that's been said with what I I also have read is an increase in the budget for early childhood education, the governor's budget. I don't know if that's true. I know there were lots of changes. Has there been an increase in the amount devoted to both to either pay and or the number of slots in in this budget? And to what extent, if that is the case, are we addressing this? And does that change what LA County's priorities should be?
Yes, there has been an increase in funding for the ECE world in in this next budget round. And it's sort of a down payment, the way I I see it. Is the rate and quality work group has done a great deal of work. And a number of advocates around the state have advocated for increased rates, increased slots. And what we're needing to do at this point in time, and again, it's a down payment, is get away from keeping people in poverty by basing their reimbursement rates on the market. In other words, what we've been doing historically is we're going to survey what the market pays. The parents can pay. Well, who are we serving? We're serving poor parents. So if we survey poor parents, then we set the reimbursement rates at such ridiculously low levels that it doesn't cover the cost of care at all. And so in this next few years, this is the window we have to be able to actually begin to price out the cost of quality care as opposed to reimbursing the providers at what poor parents could have paid already. And so in these next few years, yes, we're going to see shifts. There's, and Mike Olnick back there can probably cite the exact percentage off the top of his head. Increase this year, I believe it's ten, twelve percent in the rates this year. But then again, we're going to be moving towards that true cost of quality care. But, big but here, that's only for those providers who get reimbursed through the subsidy system. That's not the private pay providers. Granted, a provider might have some subsidy parents and some private pay parents. And so they, the providers that have both in their business can benefit. But providers who predominantly have private parents, it's not going to benefit them. I'm not sure if I'm fully answering your question.
Well, it it helps. I guess my question is though, then you know, to what extent should, so you're you're arguing then that it should continue to be the focus. Despite the increase in in the governor's budget, there still is likely to be an inadequate amount of money to pay providers, both FFN and FCC, at a fair rate to cover their the cost of.
The true cost of care.
Exactly. So it's an ongoing.
It is an ongoing, and and there is a work group, a statewide work group working to design what that's going to look like, the cost of reimbursement for those who are subsidized at the state.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we're gonna have Commissioner Allen and then Commissioner Ramirez. But first, I saw Dr. Leah put her hand up. I didn't know if she wanted to speak to respond to one of the questions.
Yes, thank you. And I think Anna might as well because she recently co-authored a blog related to some of the increases for the state. But one thing, I wanted to just go back to Commissioner Abdo's point about systems and some of the complexity and just offer that in San Francisco, which of course I know is a much smaller place than one LA. But San Francisco had been experimenting over the last couple of years. I don't quite honestly know where they are now, but it may be a model worth looking at on trying to help centralize some of that complexity at the local level. So that, and and they also have, you know, they have some local dollars going with the the state subsidies and things like that. But really trying to create these interfaces so that families essentially would have one place to go that would help determine eligibility for different types of childcare programs, helping them piece things together so that they weren't doing all of the things that you were describing. It wasn't always easing things for the programs to administer. But it was helping to facilitate that for families. So just full disclosure, I don't know exactly the status of it, but it it may be a model worth looking at and and seeing what at least maybe they learned from that. And then just to the question of the state budget. It is correct that the resources that are going in are important, but not enough, right? So in addition to the subsidies being limited, right? So there's many people that qualify that don't have access to it is kind of one piece. And then you have other families that don't meet the income eligibility limits, but still would qualify as needing, most families really qualify as needing support because you just can't afford the full cost of of care, even on a middle-class income. But the reimbursement rates have also been set at levels that go back to 2016. So it's not even looking at a current market. It's looking at what was the, what were rates at this point closer to a decade ago than than anything else. So the the ways in which we're funding as a state are really based on a depressed market for many different reasons. And so the funding just doesn't quite get us there. And when we look at the you know, level of resources, I mean, we're we're talking about a workforce who, you know, that's the biggest expense in in a program. And right now, our early care and education workforce, you know, ranks among the lowest paid, you know, across all communities. So there really is a huge gap that has to be closed. And the resources are significant, but quite honestly, they're they're putting a tiny dent in what actually is the true, the true cost of care. And there are some estimates out there in California, there was a cost of quality study that has been done. There are numbers. And I believe they they look at that on a regional level in the report, in in the report that I think could help locally look at, like, where are the gaps, right? What are, what's the subsidy? How much are the estimates based on age of child and type of care? FFN is included in that report as well as home-based childcare and and center-based as well. So just wanted to offer that up. But Anna, you may have some more specificity on the most recent investment.
Certainly. I think it is really critical to recognize that the percent increase is against that 2016 baseline and would actually fall short of inflation between 2016 and today. So we actually are not even treading water with 2016 levels with this increase. But obviously, the increase is important nonetheless. The budget also, let's bear in mind, the CCP also concluded their negotiations, which includes money for retirement and healthcare benefits, which will be a fantastic for, you know, the subsidy-facing portion. But as other folks have mentioned, the the vast majority of providers who may be serving people of all incomes, including many low-income families, but are not a part of the subsidy family, they would not be necessarily benefiting from these changes. So there's always this big piece of the system that need that support. I wanted to call out one thing related to FFN that's in motion is very exciting. So, right, California is going through this cost modeling process to figure out what this reimbursement rate should be. And rethinking even how to estimate the FF1, FFN1, is a really exciting part of that work. So in addition to, you know, surveying providers, both FCC and FFN, to learn about what are the costs they're incurring and maybe make visible some of the ways in which FFNs are first unpaid and then giving of themselves, right? Spending on supplies, spending on food. They're also going to be then rethinking what would be the path to a living wage for FFNs. And the Department of Social Services, which has the task of trying to help connect some of the dots here, they're going to be doing a lot of key informant interviews and work groups that are going to be FFN-specific. Perhaps this fall, where they're really trying to come up with a framework for how to talk about the true cost of FFN care, which is really kind of, yeah, like different than you would think for a center where you can look at rent very clearly. It's the the rent associated with the facility, whereas with FFN, adding up these different pieces and how they show up. So that's going to be very important to keep an eye on. And potentially try to be engaging with this conversations around tallying that up. And knowing what that will do, it will feed into the new rate system that we hope to have. But also keep your eye on the ball with the rate system. And though we have this stated goal and plan to work towards it, it's by no means a done deal. The state could get distracted or drop the ball or kick the can down the road and fail to follow through on those promises. So that's also a super important piece for all of us to maintain.
Thank you. We're going to hear from Commissioners Allen, Ramirez, and McBride in that order. Then we'll open it up for public comment and then take our break. Commissioner Allen.
Well, it's it's such a rich discussion, it's hard to know where to start. A couple of things, and one that strikes me is that part of the discussion seems to me to be about scarcity. So it's both, I mean, one of the consequences of underpayment of the workforce is people don't want to go into that workforce. And and it's, it seems to me that that's a very important thing to take into account while considering how to support the existing workforce is is that the advocacy for payment is a really critical benefit to families because the underpayment creates an undersupply. Which leads me to, the first question I had was, it looks like a relatively small percent of families say they're getting their ideal form of of care, particularly for younger kids. I think it's the the highest group is Latinx families, Latino families, who say they're about twenty percent are able to find the kind of care they want. And I wondered if you, what what, you talked about the families who are choosing what's ideal to them, what the basis for their choice is. But what is the choice being driven by among families who are not getting what they really want?
Thank you. That's a very important question. In the open-ended responses that parents gave in accompanying these survey results, we heard a number of different themes. And one of them was really around, what I have, there's elements of it that I like, but my ideal would be this care, if it truly met my full needs, right, in some cases. So if they're using FFN, if they're, you know, if grandma was available all day and all evening, that would be ideal. Or if they could have a home-based provider that, you know, could meet the needs of both children if space were available, something along those lines. So it's not always the case that they would, they would ideally have something radically different. Though we do know that that's sometimes the case. But we find that, you know, some arrangements just sort of can't quite deliver on the full scope of what a family would need. Leah, did you want to add something?
No, I just, I assume you'll say some of the rationale and what people, what their motivating factors.
Well, go right, go right ahead. Yeah.
Well, just to 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 speak to, you know, why people aren't accessing their ideal, right? So cost, of course, is up there as one of the reasons that you know, that drives people's decisions. That's one of the main factors. I think when Anna, you were just speaking to, which is just the availability. So people have to choose based on the hours. And, you know, their ideal may not be available all of the hours that they need something available location. Those are things that, you know, really are factoring in. But cost is a through line. You know, that really was across family type, not limited to one income bracket or another. We see variation in, you know, where people land, but that that is a common common denominator in people's choices.
It it seems like it's really critical to think then, I mean, I'm very struck in thinking about other countries and how they handle this, that it's an assumed entitlement and that you don't have to prove your death, your deficit to be subsidized for this, well, this this sort of social good. And that in in addressing the the failure of our thinking about it that way in the United States, we have to think both about cost to the family and the needs of the providers simultaneously. And and, you know, that whatever advocacy we're engaged in needs to take both into account.
There's a saying from the Worthy Wage Campaign that was very active in the 90s, which is, parents can't afford to pay. Providers can't afford to stay. We need a better way.
Well, that sort of sums it up.
Mr. Ramirez? Thank you. My question is specific to the parent report highlights. I'm just curious, when you disaggregate by ethnicity or race, did you find any significant differences or trends in the data?
Certainly. On the current usage of care, we did find that, for example, black parents were most likely to be using FFN care. So this was something that stood out to us, as well as just an increased, you know, desire to be using home-based care, especially eat for black families. FCC also had a higher level of presence in the ideal category for those families.
Thank you. Mr. McBride?
Thank you for this presentation. As I'm reports that were provided beforehand, it actually helped me understand some of the experiences that I had growing up. I was in, my grandmother took care of me and about fourteen other kids in Watts. And she did no best, you could not tell her different. Until we found Crystal Stairs, I'm a product of Crystal Stairs. And my and then being a parent myself and having had family members take care of my children as well as a home-based daycare. And then I have five, and so they've kind of all been in different environments. And having a deeper understanding as a parent now, and and I think sometimes as parents, when you're in it, you're not even really thinking about what are, you're just going with whatever is closest, whatever is easiest and the yeah, and the time that you needed and and the data reflects that. And so it's obvious that in order to support both the providers by increasing their their income that they're able to make, we do need to address the income equalities that are, that these families are facing. And thinking more long-term, it's not a short-term solution. I appreciate all of the
One of the questions I have is about tapping into resources related to CTE pathways. So career technical education in public education, there is more funding for it. And we don't often have a lot of programs that are funding or encouraging young people to pursue early childhood education as a viable career path, whether it's through an FFN or FCC or a a a childcare facility. But it is something that young people may be interested in if they see that it is a legitimate career pathway and they can serve their communities. And it can start, you know, as early as high school students doing internships with, you know, partner agencies within their school district so that they're graduating with some early childhood credits. And just looking at the age range of the providers being around forty-nine, fifty-four years old. It makes sense that they're ready to, you know, maybe leave the profession after a few years. Because by that point, you know, you're you're following around two- and three-year-olds who have a lot of energy. And, you know, who better to match that energy than young people who are coming out of high school, coming out of college? But I think because as a country, we really haven't really like legitimized early childhood education the way, we barely have legitimized K-12. The way we barely have legitimized K-12 educators. Um, but early childhood educators lay that foundation. And so I think there's an opportunity there too. Um, and, and in one of the, um, one of the slides that one of the data points was that a lot of these providers are doing it out of the goodness of their heart and also maybe because they're an entrepreneur. And low on that scale was to earn more money or to start, you know, onto another career pathway. But I think we could bring that up to the higher levels where they could see, actually see an opportunity to earn more money and to maybe go into a different career pathway if they start an early childhood education. So that was just one thing that came to mind, tapping into, um, young people who are leaving high school without a career pathway and may already have neighborhood siblings or cousins or friends that they're babysitting and taking care of and, and can actually see this as an opportunity. And there are CTE funds and more of them are, you know, are being invested in as high schools and, um, public education agencies see that not everyone is headed to college. Um, the other thing that I thought about was the outreach for the providers. Like obviously yes, if you came to my grandmother and said, we're going to teach you, she would have divorced her soul, slammed the door in your face. But I think if it had come through my mother or any of my other relatives and said, hey, there are some incentives for both of us, maybe we can incentivize, incentivize the professional development by reaching out to the families who are relying on the FFNs. Um, and saying, you know, we can benefit from this if you're willing to, um, go to this playgroup or if you're willing to sit and share with someone what you've learned about childcare. I think there is an opportunity there where I, I've, we all know that people are more willing to, um, share what they know rather than have you tell them what you think you know. And so maybe we can make it more of a reaching out like we'd like you to be a mentor or we'd like to learn what you're doing in, in your home that can help others. And in the process, provide them with more reset, resources or allow them to see that there are some incentives there. Um, and the only other question that I had actually, Dr. Ellen tapped into with wanting to know the 81% and the 76% who did not find it ideal and you addressed that. So thank you.
No. You, uh, thank you, Commissioner McBride, all, everyone for your, um, active listening and your thoughtful questions. And I just keep going back to the three discussion prompts uh, on the screen, you know, how can this presentation inform our strategic plan reset? So I would just ask us all to really keep that front of mind as we continue to digest this rich data. Uh, public comment on Agenda Item Six?
Confirming there are no public comments on Item Six.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to take a five-minute break. DAF said that they were cool with that. And so we'll be back at 3:25 to move into Agenda Item Eight, the SWOT analysis.
I've been to the We're currently waiting for Commissioner Yvette Martinez to join virtually online. And once her camera's on, we can begin this meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Martinez.
All right. Thank you, everyone for coming back. Let's go on to Agenda Item Eight, which is our Strategic Plan Reset SWOT Analysis. We've got whiteboards here. So it looks like you're about to put us to work.
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners and good afternoon to my colleagues. Really great to see everyone today. Um, to the public and, and those on, um, Zoom. Really appreciate your time and attention today. Um, since the beginning of the Strategic Plan Reset, we've been exploring how to increase Commissioner engagement within board meetings. So in March, we facilitated small group discussion and today it's going to be a different format. As you can see, we have two whiteboards here. When you walked into this room, you may have wondered why the chairs were set up in a very different way. So we want to kind of maximize viewing by having most folks sit on this side of the room. But we do have, um, additional cameras so that, um, viewers in the audience and the overflow rooms and on Zoom are able to actually see what's being written on the, the whiteboard. So as Carla mentioned, um, we do have our Strategic Plan Consultants, um, Chrissy Castro and Rigo Roberto Rodriguez here today, who is going to, who are going to facilitate our time together and that they're going to introduce themselves during the presentation. Um, you also notice that we're not seated, so you see a lot of interaction, um, today. Um, so before I hand it over to Chrissy and Rigo, I'm just going to take a few minutes to orient us to where we're at. So since March, we have been conducting a landscape analysis, exploring the internal and external context, um, in which First 5LA does its work. We reviewed data to help us understand the conditions of children and families. We looked at local, state and federal public policy opportunities to have a direct impact on children and families. Um, we looked inward, focused on what we've learned from our experience in implementing First 5LA initiatives. Okay. Um, so we were looking at First 5LA initiatives and what we've learned there as well as what we've learned, um, from how we operate as an organization. We also look to the broader field, um, looking at reports from other public agencies, philanthropy, um, from nonprofit organizations and researchers to gather their insights and their, um, their learning. And during last month's Board of Commissioners and Program and Planning Committee meetings, we shared what we've learned through this exploration. And Commissioners were invited to share your perspectives on the landscape analysis and our staff were invited to do the same. And a synthesis of those observations and insights is included in the board materials for your review. Um, in addition, um, today Commissioners had an opportunity to learn more about parent and provider perspectives in the childcare, uh, uh, home, home-based childcare. Um, so for today's, um, presentation, we're really thinking about all of this information that we have been receiving um, and digesting over the past several, um, weeks. And using that to inform our thinking about First 5LA's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. So today's presentation, Chrissy and Rigo, our Strategic Plan Consultants, will engage Commissioners in the O of SWOT, the opportunities um, that First 5LA is uniquely positioned to, uh, seize. They'll also provide an overview of the framework for the Strategic Plan Reset process and the planning calendar through November. They will close with reflections and next steps and answer any Commissioner questions. So we're very eager to get started. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chrissy, um, who will, um, begin. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Antoinette. And I also wanted to really thank Jenny Lau and Justine Flores and the little ones who are also were so patiently waiting in the room. Much love to them. Uh, thank you for, for being in these conversations with us. Uh, Yate, Nakaydene, Nishli, Hanagani Basashin, Bilagana Dashado, Nakaydene Dashnale. I, uh, am Chrissy Castro. I greet you in my Navajo language, uh, to share who I am as a Navajo woman. Um, I also want to open by acknowledging that we're on the traditional territories of the Tangva, Tataviam and Chumash peoples. And I want to take a moment to uplift and to honor their people's past, present and future. I'm a social justice consultant working at the Intersections of Systems, Policy and Community. And, um, in fact, my first job out of grad school is at the LA County Children's Planning Council. Uh, some of you may have heard of that before, which was, uh, an initiative heavily, uh, supported through a partnership of First 5LA and the County of Los Angeles. Um, and that's actually where I met my colleague Rigo and, um, many others in the room. And, um, although I've been in the realm of early care, um, in education for quite some time, I recently, um, have moved from theory to practice in that I have a, an 11-month-old baby boy. His name is Jason Natani. And yesterday we celebrated a milestone in that he took his very first step. So all of these issues, um, are very near and dear to my heart and also very humbling now as an actual parent. Um, and with that, I want to invite my colleague Rigo to also introduce himself.
And I'll do it from over here. Um, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to say that I'm so honored that Chrissy invited me to be a co-consultant with her on this, um, uh, project. And I also, uh, was saying that there's a double-edged notice to her son taking her first step, right? It means that now the whole house has to be baby-proof. Uh, so, um, I, I want to say that, um, this last conversation made me realize that I really do need to share with you that I'm the youngest, uh, of 13 of a Mexican immigrant family. And I remember during the summers, having my older sisters and brothers drop off everyone uh, at my mom's house, the grandmother. Uh, and so she was operating a fully unlicensed daycare, uh, exempt, I don't know. But, uh, there was, uh, Hilda Nina, Sergio Hector, myself, and then the nephews, Rafa, Chava, Jeannie, uh, Cynthia Junior. It just, uh, I think we passed the 14 limit, so it had to have been a center-based care. Uh, that's where I learned facilitation. I was told by my mom, callate, most of the time, just listen. Uh, and also, um, uh, I'm taking it out on the world now. I'm a professor at Cal State Long Beach. I'm the Chair of the Department of Chicano and Latino Studies, uh, where I am focusing on Latinx and Chicanx public policy and where students have to hear me for an hour and 15 minutes every day. Uh, and lastly, I'm also a school board member in Santa Ana, uh, where I have really been trying to apply a lot of the, the theory and frameworks in, in actual practice around results-based accountability. Uh, so it's a pleasure to be, uh, here with you all.
Thank you, Rigo. So, um, just a little bit of framing before we, um, So just a little bit of framing before we jump into our major exercise. And what we're doing here today, we are very much focused on the O part of a SWOT analysis. And that is because you all have, you know, received so much information around the landscape analyses. And so we are wanting to really drill into the opportunities.
All right, so we're going to be, can you hear me? Yes, okay. So we're going to be dropping into the opportunities portion of the SWOT analysis to get to the real core of the Strategic Reset Framework, which is about goals, objectives, and strategies in order to reach First Five's North Star. Now, I think Antoinette did a really wonderful job summarizing where we've been. But just to touch on a few notes, you know, the Strategic Reset was really, was determined that that was necessary because of changing conditions in the environmental landscape due to Proposition 31, due to the lingering impacts of COVID-19 on families with young children. So this reset was really initiated and led by staff who have conducted the landscape analyses, all of which you have heard have been digesting for the last several board meetings, including the program and planning meeting. And today, there's three core content pieces that we're looking to get into. One is that we want to provide an overview of the philosophy and approach that we're taking to the Strategic Reset. Two, we're wanting to make sure that your, you know, understanding is steeped in the planning calendar. So how are we going to get from, you know, July to November for a final Strategic Reset plan? And lastly, again, that SWOT analysis. So we'll structure our time in having three major agenda items. The first, more of, you know, introduction context setting. We'll share a little bit more about who we are and our approach to the work. The majority of our time will be spent on the SWOT exercise, and then we'll move to closing and reflections. So just a little bit more about who we are as the Strategic Reset Consultants. We are practitioners of results-based leadership. So within that, there's two pieces. One is results-based accountability, which Rigo will go over in just a moment. And there's also results-based facilitation. We're also facilitators of systems change processes. So Rigo and I have worked in LA County and some neighboring counties around system change efforts and child welfare and mental health in school systems. And we're also social change agents, so we see ourselves as instruments of change. We have a point of view and a perspective on social change.
And that is anchored in our approach and commitment to, and our life's work really around racial justice, community organizing, and power building. So Chrissy mentioned she started at the Children's Planning Council right after grad school or during grad school. I started organizing Mexican immigrant communities in the deep south, or what we call Orange County. This is around Proposition 187, 1994. And so since then, I've also been involved in a lot of systems change. I don't know if Commissioner Nichols will remember the KDA Strategic Planning Process back in the day and also a lot of the work with the Mental Health Services Act. I know Dr. Britt is involved in the Department of Mental Health. Chair Mitchell, I was also the facilitator for the Alternatives to Incarceration, along with Diana Suniga, Dr. Ross, and so forth, and also the report for the closure of the Men's Central Jail as well. So a lot of the work is really oriented towards power building, policy change. And by the way, my work pales in comparison to Chrissy's, but I wanted to drop that, so.
Not true, Rigo. He just wants to embarrass me. And the other point that we wanted to make is that we're very passionate about early childhood work. In a former role, I was part of the National Strengthening Families Team with the Center for the Study of Social Policy, which is deeply invested in the prevention end of ECE work. And Rigo, as he shared, is a school board member in Santa Ana, is really has been committed to leveraging his role in leadership to make sure that those systems are more deeply investing in early childhood as well.
And so Chrissy and I started to collaborate together about 20-plus years ago around the Children's Planning Council. And so a lot of our work is really, really, and has been anchored around families with young children. Because the focus on racial justice and racial equity can focus on many, many things. But over the years, Chrissy and I have kept that as a very consistent anchor in our work. And one of the things that we always emphasize and have seen is that the systems-level transformation is so, so critical to achieve better results. And so we are, I think, very aligned to what we've heard from this board around the importance of focusing on systems, transforming systems for better results at a larger scale than what individual programs can achieve that focus on individual-level change, right? And a lot of that, Commissioner McCroskey, I remember hearing from you many years ago. And we talked about also the setting up of the service planning areas, the data systems, and all that systems-level work that needs to happen in order for policymakers and change agents to be able to track change over time. Great to see you again. All right. So what we'd like to do now is provide you a very, very high-level definition of results-based accountability, just so that we demystify that term a little bit. Because results-based accountability is not a magic wand. Like, you use the word, and then all of a sudden, things transform, right? It's more like an orientation to the work. And it comes from a lot of the work that Mark Friedman has done, connected to the Center for the Study of Social Policy. And it's basically a disciplined and common sense way of both thinking about the outcomes we want and taking action, right? Disciplined in that there is a methodology, but also common sense because boards like this, and I sit also on a board for a school district, we have to figure out how to make sure that we explain and define and describe our work to a broader public, all right? So that can be the basis for a lot of the accountability, right? And this work operates both at the large scale for quality of life for communities, but also can be used to gauge and focus performance of systems, organizations, and service systems. Commissioner Nichols, I remember the days when in the KDA Strategic Plan, we had to go through each one of those measures to be able to get out of the lawsuit, right? The settlement. And so this is another way of, this is another, this is the broader framework that we use for that. I sort of also want to apologize for making those timeframes really short. But anyway, results-based accountability, basically, if we, it basically starts as a discipline. It starts with the end in mind first, and then we work backwards to the means. In other words, the strategies. And sometimes we focus first on the strategies and try to figure out what the end is. Here, the ends can refer, the ends refer to conditions of well-being. In other words, a result or an outcome is a condition of well-being that we want, either for a population within a geography. So in this case, your North Star is an example of a population-level result. Because you don't want one child or certain children, you want every child, right? To reach their developmental potential throughout their critical years of zero to five or prenatal to five, right? So this is a population-level result. But it can also work to articulate the ends if you're looking at program participants. So you can also scale it down to something like 80% of job-training participants obtain a well-paying job within 12 months, right? That's a condition of well-being or an outcome that we want, right? So the, what I, the way that we want to apply results-based accountability is by using this approach to help you articulate your goals, objectives, and strategies. And so let me just walk through this mapping. So from a results-based accountability standpoint, what we want to do is make sure we're clear, along with you, actually, that you're clear about, and I think you are, about the ends and then the means, right? In terms of your ends, the North Star is your population-level result. It's that big vision, right? But we also know that it's pretty big, and so we want to break it into specific domains. So here you are, of course, First 5 LA driving this change. We want to be able to break that vision into component parts. And that's what the Strategic Reset Process is going to help us do. And for each of those areas, we want to articulate a goal statement, right? And for each of those goal statements, we want to have very clear objectives that are measurable, right? So we're going to go through a process of making sure that we are very clear of your, about your ends, right? Your North Star, your goals, and your objectives. So for example, the objective would be something like, over the next five years, decrease the number of X by this. So we're very clear about the way you're going to measure your change. Does this make you sense so far? So that's going to take a while. We've been doing this with the Santa Ana Unified School District for a while and across other organizations that I've worked with. But it's out of that that we want to crystallize what those ends are. For each of those goals, we then want to make sure we're clear about the strategies. The strategies are always, always in relationship to your goals and your objectives. And of course, the strategies are crafted around and take into consideration this external context. And today, we're going to start mapping out the opportunities part of it, right? So in dialogue with your ends and the context, then we want to be able to be very clear about the strategies. We've heard loud and clear through documents that we've read, interviews that we've done, that this group is very strongly committed to policy-change-level strategies, to systems-change strategies, and also to community-driven strategies, right? Not one or the other, but interconnected and co-generated, right? And then your tactics really are the ones that are linked to these strategies, how you power them, right? And those tactics can be, are more dynamic. They change based on changing circumstances, whereas your strategy shouldn't be changing much, right? Unless you have proof that it's not working. And the way you find the proof is by having something measurable that you can look at, so that if it's not working, you can restrategize, right? Any questions so far? We're good so far? I hesitated to ask that question, given how many questions you had in the last round. But oh, well, I took a risk. That's the first risk I just took. All right, so the point here, as you see in the title, it's what enables us as collective efforts to build very powerful strategies that can stand a chance at achieving the results we want. What I'd like to do now is just, and then for the benefit of those who didn't, for whom I went too fast, too quickly, and all that stuff, the slides contain all the details that I just shared. So that's for everyone's benefit, so. Okay, so let me touch upon the planning calendar, and then I'll open it up for questions again before we go into the exercise. And also, oh, by the way, Chrissy, did you want to add anything? No? Okay. All right. So for the planning calendar, the very top row represents the future meetings of this board with clarity that by November, by the November meeting, we want to make sure that you are in a position to approve, review, and approve the plan. But it won't be the first time that you see something, because as you can see, there's little arrows for feedback loops every month, so that you're on top of the information that's emerging. That middle arrow represents all the internal engagement work that we've already planned out, everything from the Strategic Reset Team to the Senior Leadership Team, Work Groups, the Leadership Team, and others. The point I want to make there is that there's a lot of feedback that's going to happen internally. And then lastly, we also want to underscore our commitment to, throughout the process, figure out how to honorably engage communities in this. We, as folks who've been community organizers, this is a tight timeframe for deep community engagement. So we really want to build upon all the work that the organization has already done, all the tables that you sit at, and all the wonderful resources and assets and strengths and knowledge and wisdom that the staff have from all those years of engaging community. So we want to leverage and harness that. Chrissy, did you want to add anything else? Any questions on the planning calendar, RBA? This is like the fastest presentation I've ever done on RBA, so any questions? I'm going to wait a little bit longer. All right. Okay. So if there are no others, let me go ahead and set time, because when I start facilitating, I lose sense of time. And I know that your time is precious. So we did start, we're supposed to end this part by 4:25 is our limit, right? Okay, so if we do 25 minutes, okay. All right, so 20 minutes will take us up to 4:11, all right? Okay. 4:11, all right, that'll give me a, all right. You're listening to internal dialogue of facilitator opinion. I should have turned off the, all right, okay. So as Chrissy mentioned, today, we're focusing on the opportunities part of the SWOT. And the task again is this. We'd like to tap into your expertise, your experience, particularly from your vantage point, to share what major opportunities you see in the external environment, and then some potential pathways that we can all start, we can already start articulating for First 5 LA. And again, it's all in relationship to the North Star, which I think you're all really familiar with. Okay, so here's the table. So when we think environment, it's really broadly speaking, social environment, environmental, technological, any kinds of changes that you see happening. For example, I heard earlier in the presentation that there is an increase in the, potentially, an increase in the governor's budget, right? Those would be examples, right? But what I'd really love for you to do is to first think about those opportunities from your vantage point. So Dr. Britt, since I know you're involved in the Department of Mental Health, what might be some opportunities there? Commissioner Nichols, from your perspective, right? So I just happen to know both of you, but I don't know others. But again, from your vantage point, what might be some opportunities? What will happen is that Chrissy is going to start mapping those out as we speak. We'll spend about 20 or so minutes on this. And then, once we have a mind map, we're going to ask you to identify some connections, right? What patterns do you see? And then from those patterns, let's see if we can provide some kind of idea on a pathway that might help the First 5 LA. Yeah? Okay. So whenever anyone is ready to share one or two things, just let me know. And then we'll, we're going to use peer pressure. Commissioner Allen?
Hi, I'm from DPH.
DPH, okay. I'm starting, I was going to, so Dr. Carrer, I had a chance to work with her a lot during the Alternatives to Incarceration, but good.
Great. Well, there are a number of new funding streams that present opportunities to think about sort of approaches to families based on changing social determinants. So that includes funding streams available from Medi-Cal. These are, these are national and FFPSA coming through DCFS.
An increase in funding that can support a social determinants of health approach.
Yes.
Did I get that right?
Yeah, very focused on sort of supplementing the medical model with, or the social service model with family supports.
And so with the social determinants, and is this, are these funds coming through public health?
No, no, they're, we hope to take advantage of them in every possible way.
All right.
But no, they're federal money that the state has applied for and will then be made, you know, and then are coming to counties.
Okay, so then increase in the federal funds that would, that would come to states, then local, that you can leverage through the social determinants of health model, which then allow you, you can leverage that, and then you can then help families in different domains.
That's right. So, so I mean, the Medicaid one is CalAim in California. And the social service, the Child Protective Service one is the Families' First Preventive Services Act.
Okay, so Child Protective, so if we can just put CPS and the other one was linked to CalAim?
Yeah.
And then we'll, okay, perfect. So and at any point, Chrissy asked me a question.
Cal what?
CalAim.
Okay.
C-A-L dash A-A-M.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I don't want to then use the pressure of just looking at Commissioner Britt. Whoever wants to go next? Please.
Your demand. It's also a new way, innovative way, some mental health funding will roll down. So. So.
So I'm trying to read your mind, but I don't think we're, I don't think we're there yet.
You mean prevention and early intervention.
RP. Why don't you? What, what comes to mind when you think about that?
Well, on the heels of 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 what you said, you know, we, we are in a place where um, innovation is happening.
Government, which in my history has been rare. And so with CalAim, it's new ways in which federal and state fund, federal and state funding can be used.
Okay.
Yeah. And you know, it's my sense that in the mental health realm, it's a similar um, process, e- either through the state giving us greater flexibility on MHSA dollars. But I also thought at the state level, I could be really making it up.
So.
Looking at your face, perhaps I am.
No, no.
I, I thought that there was a new um, way in which, much like CalAim, the county would be reimbursed from the state level around some mental health services.
So the Youth Behavioral Health Initiative.
Say it again.
The Youth Behavioral Health Initiative.
Okay.
So tied to that is um, some creative ways to fund services, non-specialty mental health services, but mental health services in schools. So using behavioral health coaches, but there's also the community health worker and peer specialist funding that's coming.
So can I add then, see if this is, so it's not just new funding at all levels, but also there's greater flexibility for innovation in the use of those dollars? Is that, can we say that?
I think there's been greater innovation in this, at the state level for pushing forward a uh, a platform for greater flexibility in how those funds.
Okay, so then Chrissy, what we do is just do a a, a link to that. So it'd be new and flexible and then just a link on top of it for state level. And you might want to use a different um, mark.
Got it.
You all heard that? Uh, so yeah, so, so you're pointing that at the state level, you're seeing more of that. Uh, in the um, in the making more flexible the use of those dollars? Or what, how would you?
Yeah, so I would say that we're going to go, uh, we're going to approach CMS, Center for Medicaid Services, to get some flexibility around how Medicaid funding is used here in California.
Okay, so I would just abbreviate it as right next to state level. Oh, can we get another, okay, so just, but right next to state level, just put CMS um, slash uh, flex and then we'll, that'll be our code for that one, okay?
And um, I think a lot of the CalAim, uh, I won't say a lot. So there's also through the California Youth Behavioral Health Initiative, more attention to services being delivered in school-based settings.
Is that a new, can we put it as a new trend? Okay, so there's a new trend that would be um, the youth development or?
Youth Behavioral Health Initiative.
Youth Behavioral Health Initiative? And?
Um, so but greater flexibility there. Um, and I think an increased effort for managed care plans to provide services on campuses where there are students.
Okay.
So I, it speaks to the need for greater partnerships with managed care plans.
Okay, and so what I'm tracking is that, that that youth behavioral health um, work is happening in tandem with greater efforts for managed care plans to be offered at the school level, at the site level?
Yes.
At the school level. So then it, the opportunity there is to be able to leverage it at the school site level, deliver it there.
Right.
Yeah.
So through pre-K all the way through um, publicly funded colleges and universities.
All the way there, so it's K sixteen. So it's K, pre-K sixteen, okay, so then pre-K sixteen.
Which is a big extension.
Okay, good. Good, I have um, uh, Commissioner McCroskey and then we'll come back to Commissioner Allen.
Um, so as, as our chair just said, all of these changes don't usually happen at the same time. Uh, and they're pretty big ones. Each one of them is, involves a very significant set of providers and agencies and communities and so forth. And to me, there's a really important opportunity, there are two really important opportunities. One is at the county level to get out ahead of trying to align what these changes may mean. And I know that departments are working on that. But the second opportunity feels like to me is to very purposefully engage community voices in thinking that through.
So can, can we put those as two other strengths? Yeah, or do you want it to be?
Wherever you want to go.
But I, let's keep it distinct because I'm hearing it, they're all interconnected, but one is you aren't underscored that there's an opportunity for the county to get ahead of all these innovations so that you can leverage them, harness them.
Right, there, there are already, I think, some potential gaps we're seeing that, given how each of these play out, we may not have the, the opportunity, you know, for some of the kinds of supports to children and families previously been available, unless we're purposeful about it.
Yeah, and so like being purposeful and get ahead of it now that we're seeing it. And then um, the second one was also as a new one is it's to engage community on the front end for that. Yeah, okay. Commissioner Allen?
I, I think sort of uh, piggybacking on the point about um, the greater availability of mental health services is um, because of the pervasiveness of COVID impacts and and other social forces, social media and so on, impacting the mental health of youth. I think on the one hand, the need is dramatically increased. On the other hand, I think there's somewhat less stigma about uh, implementing sort of primary and preventive mental health services that have very strong components of social um, positive youth development. I mean, so it, it's, it's really getting away from a mental illness mindset exclusively. Clearly is not, not a problem, but into a mental wellness mindset that I think creates a lot of opportunity to have a vision of how we want children to grow up.
Um, so that the opportunity is for us to really use and advance the mental wellness framework.
That's right, the de-stigmatization.
Because it's de-stigmatized, right? So at least, continue to de-stigmatize mental health or mental illness or mental challenges through a mental wellness approach.
Is that fair?
That can address the increased uh, need particularly among youth.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, Commissioner McBride? And then Commissioner Ramirez, and then we'll come back to Commissioner Bird, so Commissioner McBride?
I think another opportunity is the oper, is, is the um, the doula uh, coverage because that's a touch point, especially for families who are just starting to grow their families and having children and not realizing that it's never too early to think about your child's development and growth beyond just, you know, during your pregnancy or the first few months when you're adjusting to a new child. And so I think having um, that is an opportunity to push.
Do you want it connected to one that's up there or a new one?
Um, I would say new.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so let's do one on, uh, for, so it's a.
Yeah, it's a new Medi-Cal.
Basically doula support and services are, are, are going to be funded or already funded?
Through Medi-Cal.
Through Medi-Cal. And so that, that fact creates an opportunity for
the, the, that touch point with families so we can start informing them of opportunities to they are prepared even before their child is born to know what services are available. Especially when it comes to early detection, uh, identification and, you know, children who are born and may not have the assessments that they are, you know, that they need early on. Families can be made aware of that.
Yeah, so those early touch points where we can already start providing support, service, information and connection.
Exactly.
Okay, got it. Uh, Commissioner Ramirez, we'll come back to Commissioner Allen and then we'll go to Commissioner Wexler, yeah?
Thank you. So um, I have two opportunities I'd like to discuss. And one is building a little bit on what Commissioner Bird said about schools as a hubs for community. So the Community Schools Initiative um, is very well resourced in California, uh, can be new in some places and that could be an opportunity. Um, and then second, of course, um, the UPK and the mixed delivery services. It's also been a change in law and resource, right, to provide um, education, you know, at the K-12 system to the younger populations.
Okay, so Commissioner Ramirez, let me stay with you for a second. So one of them is the uh, Community Schools Model that's been well-resourced uh, from the Department of the State. So let's put that one as Community Schools Model. Do you want it as a new one? Yeah, okay, so.
I think so.
So let's call it the Community Schools Model. And what can that Community Schools Model and the resourcing of that, how can that, how is that an opportunity?
It's an opportunity because resources are brought into communities and there's greater access um, for, you know, people who need it.
Uh, so it can increase uh, by bringing uh, resources to the community schools that are anchored in the neighborhoods and communities that can provide greater access sooner and that's, okay.
Correct, and it engages the community as Commissioner McCroskey had mentioned.
And it's linked to community engagement, so it can also increase uh, the capacity for community engagement because that's one of the, for, one of the pillars.
Correct.
For community schools, the community engagement. And then you mentioned also the mixed delivery model?
Yes, UPK and the mixed delivery model, Head Start, early head start, um, you know, childcare as well. All of those different programs working together, a differently, you know, large initiative, right, large push in California.
Okay, so, and how is that an opportunity? Well, and I know it might be obvious to everyone, but I just want to call it out, so, good.
It's an opportunity because there is funding to do that, so school districts, you know, have to do that and there's a lot of, you know, support and technical assistance for people to do that. So again, a broadening the access uh, for people.
Okay, so again, it's an example of kind of state level funding and opportunities that the county at the local level can get ahead of and leverage, right? I know I had Dr. Bird next, Commissioner Wexler, my apologies, it was Dr. Bird and then yourself.
So um, I thank you so much for bringing up Community School Initiative because we are using MHSA to fund a lot of those partnerships and bring resources onto campuses. Um, and in some of the sites we visited, it has actually addressed the stigma issue because we're training, we're, we're providing resources not only to students, but their family members who are also then better understanding uh, what those services look like, what those needs may be. And so it's breaking down walls of stigma intergenerationally. And then to go back to your uh, question about MHSA flexibility, um, I think there is some flexibility coming in the governor's proposed um, behavioral health redesign. Uh, it would uh, carve out a large chunk of MHSA dollars for housing. So it would increase at the higher end services, but it could have um, a less flexible approach for other services.
Okay. So um, how is that an opportunity or is that more of a clarification?
I think it's an opportunity going back to um, the director's um, talk message this morning around homelessness because I do think we are experiencing a tremendous amount of homelessness within LA County, especially that involve children and children of this age range. So I do think it's an opportunity for those people um, who are experiencing homelessness. Uh, but it could affect other resources.
So for families experiencing houselessness, the shift potentially in MHSA could bring greater family stability around the housing component.
Yes.
Yeah, especially for children who are very young.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler and then uh, Chair Mitchell.
Um, this may be repetitive or uh, but I just hear um, all the ideas together to me um, capture the overall strategic uh, focus of the board on prevention. And just to have that word up on the board because it just feels like that's sort of the umbrella strategy for the county right now to be focusing on the children as young as possible and to be intervening younger and, you know, with their parents before they have children. I mean, everything is just based on research and all of our practice. We need to be focusing on prevention, we, we are focusing more and more on prevention. We have the Prevention Task Force and so many other initiatives and so many of these funding initiatives, MHSA and Families First um, are, are focused on prevention and mandated supporting and new DCFS initiative um, is likewise all about, you know, how can we be?
Yeah.
Preventing kids from entering our systems.
Yeah, Commissioner Wexler, I, I heard two things. I think certainly one is the theme that you're already reading across around prevention. But I also heard that there are already multiple uh, efforts going on around prevention.
Yes.
Yes.
And so for First Five.
That there are multiple, uh, which we can name later, but in other words, the opportunity here is that we already have an infrastructure of some kind of groups that are meeting, doing work around prevention as well.
And and First Five is part of that solution.
With First Five uh, as part of that group, okay. So I have Commissioner, Chair Mitchell and then Commissioner Allen.
Awesome, way off the lot. Just, I'll put that out there. Um, but I thought about housing dollars, not just MHSA, but housing dollars across the board in recognizing the growing number of houseless families as well as those who are housing vulnerable.
So an expansion in resources?
For production.
For production.
Preservation.
For uh, both houseless family and housing vulnerable.
Yes.
So a greater, being able to cover a greater spectrum of families who are um, experiencing houselessness.
Yes.
Also that kind of prevention work as well on the vulnerability side.
Critical prevention work.
Got it.
Secondly, the, the work that the county is doing around poverty alleviation and the impact that will have on families, everything from our guaranteed income pilot to our entire new initiative titled Poverty Alleviation.
So the Poverty Alleviation Initiative that has different strands could be something else that can be harnessed for this effort.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and um, I heard also in the presentation earlier around the income issue, right? Uh, so that could also be connected.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
Last piece I would add, this is the way outside the box one, but it's an opportunity. Recognizing what potential leave behind um, for children zero to five. We could expect or request, given the fact that LA County is going to host FIFA, the Olympics and Paralympics and all the planning and resources when we talk about um, play and spaces for play and greening LA County, a- all of the realities of those major events coming to LA.
Okay.
From the impact it's going to have on our um, public transit system. But the, but the leave behinds that will, could benefit this population.
The, the major events that are happening in LA County over the next number of years, that we can harness those to uh, is to insta, to, to ensure that we have some leave behind. And what I hear with leave behind is some kind of infrastructure, right? Whether that's transportation, infrastructure, uh, open space and so forth so that we can actually see if we can mold systems by leveraging the investments that are coming in.
Because I, when you think about the role LA 84 has played since being for play for.
Particularly around play.
Yes, I, that's what made me connect those dots.
So it is for fourteen, I have Commissioner Allen. And I also want to make sure that the commissioners that are uh, on uh, online also get a chance uh, to say something. So let's go with Commissioner Allen and then we'll open up a space for our online commissioners to see if they want to add anything else. Sounds good, Sophia.
Not to flatter anybody who's present, but if I was talking to people from any other part of the country, I would say we have a very, we have a very progressive board and I think very supportive of a lot of initiatives around early, around pregnancy, early childhood, family support. And it's, you know, it's a time limited opportunity. Um, and so, you know, I think, thinking very hard about what, you know, what we can do that really says this is what the county stands for. Um, it's time to do that.
So the, the kind of progressive nature of the board can give its stamp right now, you have a window of opportunity.
That, and.
Really move.
That's right.
Alright. Um, uh, commissioners who are online and then we'll circle back to Commissioner Nichols uh, or uh, any other uh, opportunity that you see? And then we're gonna, we're gonna create the links and the themes and harness that.
I think you've covered a lot. I have no additional comments.
Hi, this is Judy. I, I am the same. I'm just blown away by the uh, smart comments that have been made already.
Okay, thank you. Comis, Vice Chair Nichols?
Uh, go, go in at the end, people have kind of read my notes already, but I, I may re-say some of them in a slightly different way. And I broke them into categories when I was writing them down. And in terms of funding, certainly CalAim and FFPSA. But I also think the change in our revenue stream is a, is an opportunity. We will have less money, but I think there's a chance to be leaner and meaner, to be more focused and maybe to be more impactful as we. as we we cut off some of the things that weren't having the impact that we were expecting. And I I mean, it's corny to say, but I do think that is an opportunity for us a little bit. I mean, in terms of CalAim, it is more than just a funding change. And I am not the health expert on this board or in the county, but it it is going to bring an accountability to managed care plans that has not been there before.
For greater accountability.
It is. So in the past, people were sort of on their own, I think, to to seek out the care they needed. Now the managed care plans themselves have have measures to engage and connect their clients to service. And and so it's going to change the dynamic a little bit. And and in addition to that, it requires them to collect and publish data about the clients they are engaging in their success in connecting them to services. And then beyond that, the state will hold the managed care plans accountable to certain goals in certain areas. And that includes maternal health and infant health in a way that hasn't been done before. There are benefits under CalAim. In addition to just the money that comes, one's enhanced case management. If you are a CalAim participant, as I understand it, you have an enhanced case management benefit. You have a case manager ultimately assigned to you to help you navigate system and to get access to the medical care that you're entitled to. Then in terms of politics, we've covered a lot of it, but this is a moment of opportunity. That California is being significantly restructured in major ways around health and social services. These programs are some, but I think there's more coming. We do have a progressive governor, progressive legislature and progressive board. And and I think not only are some things on the table now, but things will continue to be put on the table in a way that's never been done before. And within the county, the things I'm most familiar with, a couple of them have been touched. We have a Prevention Task Force. We have the Poverty Alleviation Group. We also have an RDI initiative to address racial disproportionality. And and that gets to my next bucket, which was sort of social issues. I think that there is a recognition and a conversation going on right now about racial disproportionality and equity that hasn't happened maybe ever before, which which presents us with opportunities to push into areas and to get to root causes where in the past I don't think we've been able to go. Additionally to that, I think the community through COVID and through the Floyd George issues organized in a way that that will be beneficial to us. I think we have partners out there that have stronger voices, better resources, know how to engage in a way that they hadn't been able to engage before. And then last thing, just about our community, particularly LA County is rich in terms of the partners we have. We have, you touched on a couple of them. We have sports teams, we have entertainment, we have, you know, Disney and Universal Studios are both within the county. And we have a huge engagement with philanthropic partners that have just frankly, tons of money and interest in helping people. And I feel like that's an untapped resource to some degree and a great opportunity for us.
Thank you for outlining all that. I know Commissioner McBride has her hand up. I just want to say that I wish we had the ability to add more time to our time. So Commissioner Greg Bright, if you can make it. AI, so AI also is another. Yeah, so AI as well and leveraging it. All right, so we only have like two or three minutes and then we have to close. And the closing is going to be very quick. So just what are some connections that you see here? What's a, just what is a connection that you think? Go ahead.
I think just an overriding opportunity is communication and public information. So much information. I too am blown away by my fellow commissioners' comments, but everybody doesn't know this. And certainly the community and the families don't know this. But there are, there are campaigns and opportunities, the No Hit Campaign, the Safe focusing on newborn health. There are so many opportunities where just having that information there for that family can make a difference without any kind of direct intervention in their heads, being able to understand what's available and how they can best promote the development of their children.
So one through line here is that stands out to you is making sure that on the communication and public information and we, that'll be critical to leveraging all of this because it it already exists, but if we don't have a way to to use our communication platform and public information, then it'll stay fragmented. Yeah, all right. Anything else that stands out to you here as a pathway? So one pathway would be that. We got to have a clear public information, communication pathway. Anything else? Commissioner McBride?
Well, I I appreciate being in a space where this commission is and and first five LA is undergoing a strategic reset. I don't know if other commissions are having these exact kinds of conversations where they're looking at opportunities. And so I think communication with other commissions and county departments is another through line because we can't accomplish really any of this without that.
Yeah, so another pathway is to make sure that we have the the active linkage to other commissions, other county departments and other sectors, as Commissioner Nichols mentioned, like entertainment. Like we have to figure out how that linkage is going to happen. Yeah, Commissioner Wexler?
Well, and along the lines of what both of you have been saying and the AI point, you know, with all these changing systems and changing funding sources, it's all about navigation and the role that first five plays as a navigator. I mean, we 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 have all those linkages with all those systems. So 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 the the need and, you know, created by these opportunities for a mechanism to identify resources for families, for professionals in the field and for providers.
Yeah, so that the navigation capacity and and a, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was also thinking of it from the end user navigation perspective. Like, how do we create this information that is accessible for the people who need it across different organizations, different agencies? Because like I I know of some websites, funny websites that are not the most easy to navigate. And I do think that we hear complaints from our stakeholders a lot that they cannot find things. So I do think to the extent we can make things app based, because people are all about an app that will make things much more accessible and available, I think we should be considering that as well.
Okay, so maybe time for two last comments. Did you have another? Go for it, and then we'll end with Chair Mitchell.
Well, I I think there is a lot of very important conversation in the county. Consumer, public, you know, resident engagement. I think we have to think about how to do that in the most meaningful ways so that it's it's both people being aware, but it's also a sense of agency. And and how can some of the money that's flowing in these opportunities be directed towards autonomous community leadership?
Yeah.
That has a voice of its own. So when the board changes and isn't so progressive, there's something left behind.
Another leave behind.
That's right.
Yeah, and then Chair Mitchell?
Thank you. Two quick things. As as we talk about navigation, let's not forget what we learned during COVID, that there are far too many Angelino who don't have access to the internet. So we talk about websites that are difficult or even apps. We can't build anything that requires a speed or a a device that the people, a good number of the people we serve simply don't have. So it may be old school community health workers, Pomitortes, ways in which we gather, identifying trusted sources to push out information and share. I just, we we can't forget what we learned in terms of how people don't have access to what has become very natural to some of us. And another, I guess, opportunity is recognizing, I thought about it as you talked about, you know, the the current kind of elected body. We are in the middle of a huge transformation in philanthropy. Three foundations will have new presidents in the in this year, if not more. You know, foundations that have had some long term, stable leadership and what that could mean in terms of the priorities for giving in in philanthropy across LA County and where zero to five will fall in that.
Okay.
So.
So I'm going to summarize the five interconnected pathways that you came up with and then close. And so one is communication and public information is going to be critical. This linkages to sectors so that we can leverage those resources, philanthropy, industry sectors and so forth. The third is this navigation, making sure you are and and others can navigate existing systems. The the fourth is this accessibility, not just AI, but old school. I was thinking I used to sell eight track tapes, but that's a different old school. That's old school. No one understood what the, some of us did. All right, and then lastly, the meaningful resident community engagement piece. So if we focus on those kind of, if we can be informed by those five pathways, I think that would take us on a good path. The last thing then for today is next steps. There are a consultant collaborating with us will be interviewing you all individually, so you'll be hearing that. And then lastly, we begin our strategic reset team session tomorrow. And so we'll start working with the internal staff. Thank you, Soss, for your time. Chrissy, anything else?
Thank you, everybody.
In what order were you in the 14 children in your family?
I'm sorry?
Where did you fall in the 14?
There were 13, but we later found out there was 14. But anyway, that's a trauma. That's kidding, I'm kidding, that's totally a joke. That was, I'm the last one. I'm the youngest.
The very youngest?
The very youngest.
I wouldn't, if we had bet on that, I wouldn't have bet that he was younger. Thank you very much. Amazing experience. You know, I'm I'm sorry that we're going to have the individual interviews because I do better listening to other people riffing off of what you say. So when I had, when I got nothing during the individual. All right, a public comment on agenda item eight.
Confirming there is one public comment virtually. And Carlos Arceo, the floor is yours. You have two minutes for your public comment.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Carlos Arceo, and I work with Párra los Niños and actually work with Best Start Region One, one of one of first five's investments. And I really appreciated the conversation that just happened, particularly with the framing around results based accountability. And I think, given the fact that this is our wheelhouse, I really do believe in the points that folks shared about really in on authentic partnership with community members and folks who are most impacted. So that we have a consistent finger on the pulse of what's happening in communities. We're surveying and then quickly losing important data when that happens. I think someone brought up the idea of, you know, how do we partner better with residents and community members so that we're not trying to channel their their instinct here and we actually hear directly from them? We often hear from community members across our region that while they appreciate that their capacity is being built to navigate through mazes that lead to resources and services, they wonder why a maze needs to exist to begin with and when that maze begins to be dismantled. So again, I think about that in the spirit of systems change and institutional change. And I fear again, in the spirit of results based accountability, that we'll attempt to respond to adaptive problems with technical responses. And Supervisor Mitchell, you brought up the role of community health workers. We work with committee members to become community health workers. And I'll share an example of working with Children's Hospital Los Angeles when they believe that an application, app phone application would resolve the issue of residents not getting too much needed services and resources. And that was scrapped pretty quickly when they realized, and this is one of the things that I really appreciate about the institution, that they would really, really, really willing to self interrogate and say, where are we the problem? How are we contributing to residents getting to these much needed resources and opportunities? And I'm happy to say that it wasn't the app, but it was community health workers that raised the rate of folks accessing resources and services from 40% to 82%. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. Any more?
No other public comments for this item.
Thank you. I'll open it up for general public comment for items not on today's agenda.
Madam Chair, there are no public comments for items that are not on the agenda.
Colleagues, is there any other business that we should consider before we adjourn today's meeting? Beautiful scene, then. Thank you so much for your active listening engagement. This wonderful session. We are dark in August. Am I making that up or?
We are dark in August and back on in September.
So everyone have a great balance of your summer, and we look forward to reconvening in September. We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you so much.